City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. So we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge. And tonight, we're pleased to be joined in leading the pledge by the young women of Girl Scouts Troop 526, been invited by council member Sandine, and we're going to join them for the pledge.
(inaudible)
(audience laughing)
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 Hey, thank you, Troop 526, for being with us this evening. I was a Girl Scout, I was a Brownie, a Cadet, a Junior, a Cadet, a Senior, and then was an Assistant Troop Leader. So it's wonderful to have you here and to care so much about the city. So thank you for being here, and I know Girl Scouts, where girls grow strong. So, thanks, bye.
All right. (audience laughing) All right, thank you so much. All right, the council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding negotiations with Mercy Housing and the West Capitol Avenue parcel numbers that are indicated on the agenda. No action was taken. That brings us into item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on the agenda, we are permitted to take action or have a discussion about items that are brought up under 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We ask anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's near the front door and to turn that card into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a 20th Century style flip chart, and that simply indicates which item the council is currently considering. The clerk accepts the cards all the way up until the end of the staff report on any particular agenda item. Once the council questions and the public testimony begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so if you're here on a particular item, please be sure to get the card in prior to the end of the staff report. And finally, we also know that for some folks, speaking in public is not their favorite activity, and it can be nerve-wracking and induce anxiety, so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls or even any other applause or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. So with that, we don't have any requests to speak under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency met on August 23rd. We approved accepting $5.5 million for Measure V city funds for flood improvement projects and amended our budget for fiscal year 2018-19. Following our meeting, the board took a tour of the South Port Levy Improvement Project, and we toured the setback levy areas, fix-and-place levy, slurry wall work, the borrow excavation sites, the breach excavation, and then seepage berm work. So it's very comprehensive. The project continues to be on schedule with work to be completed late October, early November. And then the Port Commission met earlier tonight in closed session, and no action was taken.
Councilmember Rusko?
I only have one announcement that I haven't yet reported on. On August 27th, the Yolo County Children's Alliance Board, as well as myself and the vice chair of the board and its executive director, were pleased to be guests at the River Cats Stadium along with Dinger to receive a $2,000 contribution from the River Cats Foundation. That money is going to support programs that support local youth throughout Yolo County, but our Family Resource Center is very local. It's over on Todd Hunter, and there's a variety of different programs you can find out through yolokids.org. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Right. Okay, I attended the Tourism Arts Parks Entertainment and Sports Committee meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors in Reno, Nevada, last week, which is chaired by the mayor of Reno. That session was partly held in Reno, focused on the ballpark there where the Reno Aces play. It's a more modern version of a minor league park, but I think about half the size of Rayleigh Field, maybe a third of the size of Rayleigh Field. But with some very interesting financing approaches in the area, and the impact of that park has been pretty significant there as well. Also met with an individual who's been part of the Reno Renaissance, who's interested in potentially partnering with us on Opportunity Zones. Also extensive presentations around what Reno's doing on art, which is pretty spectacular. To be honest, I hadn't been outside of the casino area of Reno in a long, long, long time, if ever, and they have a very robust art program that is deeply integrated in their transportation, land use, neighborhood revitalization, social equity strategy, which I thought offered good lessons for cities of our size, even though they're five times bigger than us. So that was the first half of the meeting. The second half of the meeting, the mayor of Reno took the delegation of mayors to the Burning Man Festival that is heavily associated with Reno. She indicated that it's about a $60 to $70 million economic impact on the city of Reno. It's pretty extraordinary, given that it's as far away from Reno as we are. But because there's no other infrastructure nearby, Burning Man for hotels and the Walmarts in Reno, I think the day that we were there, on that single day, had sold 2,200 bicycles. And this was in the middle of the festival, so it's pretty extraordinary. So we were examining some of the tourism dynamics of festivals of that type. No one, I think, in the country is contemplating trying to replicate that for a lot of reasons. But in terms of relating some of these kind of festival-type experiences to city economic developments, I thought it was really quite informative. It would have been more useful to me had I gone before we did TBD Fest. A lot of what was going on in TBD Fest in terms of the activations and the style and some of the vibe of it were a lot clearer to me in terms of that demographic, which I don't think any of us are necessarily a part of. But Burning Man was helpful in that respect. But also in terms of the approaches to city planning and waste removal and other things that happened in this city of 70,000 people, slightly larger than our city, that doesn't exist one day, completely exists the next day, and then is gone 10 days later without a trace in the desert, has raised a lot of interesting kind of thought exercises and questions, and then some answers there about how to accomplish that, and then what city planning looks like when you start from nothing, as opposed to what city planning in cities looks like, which is starting with the rules that were written 150 years ago and that we're still saddled with. So, interesting experience. We didn't sleep over, so I can't, I'm not going to claim we had the full Burning Man experience, but it was, I thought, a really useful set of lessons and then context. The other piece of it, as I think council is aware, we have been working with wide-open walls about bringing Burning Man sculptures to the Riverwalk and/or to other parts of West Sacramento, and so this was an opportunity to meet directly with the Burning Man leadership and their Art in Cities program at that location. And they're very excited and very interested about that partnership, and so I think we're all hopeful to be able to bring that to fruition in 2019. All right, so if there's no other reports, we don't have any appointments, and I'm just signaling, except to the extent to which staff identifies an emergency between now and November, it's not my intention to make any more appointments to commissions and boards, given that we're so close to the cycle in November when we put the call out to the citizens of the community post-election for their interest in serving on commissions. So again, unless staff informs the city clerk or the city manager that we're having a problem with quorum on any of the commissions, it's not my intention at this point going forward to make additional commission appointments.
Just to thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point of clarification, there are folks who have been sending their applications for specific vacancies. Will those be considered after the call as part of it, the cycle?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Just so they're clear that they don't have to apply.
They don't have to reapply again in November.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, then that brings us to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 9. Are there any item on consent to be removed or any item for further questions or discussion? All right, seeing none, then, is there a motion on the consent agenda? I'll move the recommended action. It gets moved by Mayor Protem Lidesma and seconded by council member Johannesen. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, cheering none. That motion carries. Item 10 is presentation and discussion of I Street Bridge Deck Conversion Feasibility Study. Is he in? C. Yeah. You're a little taller than a Girl Scout.
Yeah, just a bit. Not much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm going to be presenting on behalf of Katie Jacobson this evening, and bear with me, I'm also recovering from losing my voice, so if it gets a little crackly, I apologize. In 2015, the cities of West Sacramento and Sacramento applied to receive a $2,000 Caltrans Sustainable Communities Transportation Planning Grant, and that was to prepare a feasibility study to analyze the conversion of the upper deck of the I Street Bridge into an amenitized, high-quality bike pedestrian connection across Sacramento River that connects the two cities' waterfront districts. At the feasibility study's inception, the project was acknowledged as having the potential to be iconic placemaking feature and to contribute greatly to the quality of life to our far regions' residents. And thus, the feasibility study needs to look at this as more than just an active transportation facility, but really look to incorporate the life that we expect that the structure would be bringing to the area. The feasibility study will include, in addition to speaking to the quality of life issues, an analysis of the upper deck's existing conditions, and all of the improvements that we have deemed necessary in order to bring the structure up to code. It will include a description of alternatives for the hardscape and landscape improvements that could be proposed to be included, and most importantly, it will include a discussion of a strategic approach, or what we hope to be a strategic approach, to minimize many of the complications, and there are several, with this project should the council elect to pursue this project further. The most pressing challenge related to this project is timing, and I'll explain what I mean by that. The city's rights to the upper deck immediately terminate if the city ceases highway purpose uses, which would require that the new connection be constructed prior to the viaducts that currently connect that structure, which are required to come down with the new bridge project. So effectively, that means that the timeframe that we have, the outside date that we have to have these new connections constructed and installed is 2022 if we're going with the current I Street Bridge replacement project schedule. Tonight's workshop will touch on those aspects of the project that I discussed, and will present some of the draft content that will be included in the feasibility study. That presentation will occur by Ali from WSP, who is the consultant that was selected in July of last year. Following his presentation, I'll just wrap it up with what kind of the next steps are, not only for completing the feasibility study, which has grant requirements attached to it, but also what we think are the likely project implementation actions that are necessary for us to run in parallel in order to keep to that 2022 schedule. Tonight, we're seeking direction from the council regarding the project development, so that means timing, phasing, how the community outreach is to occur, how we're going to continue to be working with our partners across the river, as well as the project approach alternatives, which Ali will be presenting for you. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ali, and I'll be available for any questions, as well as Chris Doherty will be at the conclusion of that presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about this really exciting project. Let's see if I can figure this one out. Okay, none of these so far working.
There you go, roll it.
Roll it. Thank you. So this project came about because of the new I Street replacement. So as you recognize, that the new bridge being constructed will require transfer of vehicular traffic from existing I Street to the new bridge. This particular action, the owner of the bridge being Union Pacific in 1911, they had an agreement that if it is not used as a highway traffic bridge, the ownership will take over the remaining portion of the bridge, so the use will cease to exist. So let's talk a little bit about the project. You have an asset that is roughly about 850 feet long, this bridge. This is the heaviest bridge, movable bridge, constructed in the United States, so it has a record on it. Because it is a double-decker, somewhat iconic, it is a swing structure, and it spans between Sacramento and West Sacramento. Currently, on the Sacramento side, there is a pedestrian underpass that goes under it with a bicyclist, which floods when the river is high. So let's take a look at the value of this asset. It's a $70 million asset. It's in current condition. It is more expensive if you want to replace it, but in the current condition, it's a $70 million asset that both cities are controlling. So currently, there is a plan for additional bridge on the river crossing the both sides. There are destinations on both sides. The Tower Bridge has a walking distance, and on both sides, you can see those circles defines a comfortable walking and biking distance for regular, average person. As you can see, there is an area in the middle that is not really served by either bridges. And the station, Sacramento Valley Station, is in that area, and West Sacramento's residential community is in that area. That is the area that is being focused by the existing I Street Bridge. That is where it's being serviced by. So the connectivity of this existing bridge is extremely important to both cities. If you look at, you can see the existing station is marked on the plan. The pink and the blue on one side shows the future light rail. Also, you can see the bike facilities shown in the West Sacramento in red. You can see all of that facility and connectivity is really being serviced by this bridge in the middle. So what do we do with existing bridge when the new bridge comes in play? If we do not do anything, you will lose the control of this asset. The connectivity will be severed, and now it will take longer to come across these two new structures, one tower, one being the new C Street Bridge. Railroad will take it over, and they will not maintain it. And that is given, because they don't maintain their own bridges, why would they maintain a bridge that is not being used? And it will become the source of blight. And I have a little bit of experience with that. This is in some of the abandoned railroad bridges. The one on the left is in New York City. The other two are in California, in Bay Area, and I was inspecting these structures. So as you can see, it becomes a source of nuisance, and it becomes source of gathering, and you will lose the control of maintenance, even though they get fenced off. And one of these structures is a movable bridge, and it's in open position, but still people make onto it. So what is the approach? Naturally, you want to retain the control of this asset. In order to retain it, you have to have some connection on either side so the active users, bicyclists and pedestrians, can get onto the bridge, cross the river, and get off. That is the minimum requirements to using the existing bridge. By keeping the control of it, now you can maintain it and control access to it, and you can inspect it. So this is a very critical element of having an asset in a city. But more importantly, because of this bridge and the location of it, it is a somewhat iconic landscape for you. It has opportunity to create a value for both cities as a place, as a destination, as a placemaking. A place that you can call it, and I have experienced in that in Arizona, that we created, that you can say, "I'm going to meet you on the bridge for a drink." So the bridge, you don't need to even say the name. So it becomes really a source of development, source of income for the residents, and source of pride for the community. This is what is happening right now. They have about 4 million visitors in New York. This is a railroad bridge which was converted to a linear park. So what is the purpose of the feasibility study? So the purpose was that what do we need to do to improve on this bridge? What do we need to do to convert it from vehicle going across it to pedestrians and bicyclists? So we had to look at the condition of the bridge, look at the access points and where people are going to get on and get off, and how do we create a safe environment for people to use it? That was the purpose of feasibility. Also, the purpose was that what it costs to do it, and what is the requirements, environmental requirements and other permitting requirements? So that was the purpose of the feasibility. So we started with a grant from the Caltrans for $200,000 and some city matches, and we have started the study. So looking at the bridge, the bridge has three distinct elements. The yellow piece in the middle is owned by Union Pacific. Anything beyond that is owned by two cities. The one on the left, it's a piece of approach bridge that we are looking to keep, and I will explain to you why. And the one on the right side, there is a little triangular pie-shaped piece that we are thinking of to keep on the city of Sacramento side. The rest of the approaches will be coming down as we finish the new river-crossing So on the Sacramento side, if you look closely, you will see all of the railroad facilities under that triangular piece. So by keeping that piece, now when we go to connect to it, we do not interact with railroad, and we will minimize the requirements of the railroad. We don't enter there right-of-way. We don't need agreements, because you are connecting to your own property. In addition, city of Sacramento is interested possibly to have a hotel on the north side, which is the right side of the photo. So now you can have a direct access from that yellow piece of property to that hotel. On the left side, you have Railroad Museum. You can have aerial connection to the roof of the Railroad Museum, because they're thinking of having some kind of an event place there. That piece of property, if you want to create it, starts at about $5 million. So that is the value of that little piece of land that you see. On the West Sacramento side, also we are keeping that yellow piece of bridge that's approaching it. Again, the purpose of that is stay out of the railroad property and directly be able to connect to their existing facilities on north side, which is top of the photo, and on the south side, which is the promenade on the bottom of the photo. Again, so we are saving a part of the existing bridge which is already there. So the next step is what do we need to do to convert this bridge to a pedestrian facility? Naturally, right now, the gates are made for vehicular use. We should upgrade them to something similar to what we put on the Tower Bridge. So these gates are a little bit finer and keep, they're closed automatically, and they have camera controls, so you can control the pedestrians as they enter and leave the structure. Next is we did a review of the bridge. As you can see, all the handrails are damaged, cracked, and they do not meet the current safety standards. The openings are too large for children, and they can go through. So these handrails need to be replaced, either in kind, or it has to be repaired, but I would not recommend them to repair them, because they're in pretty poor condition. You may be able to salvage handrails from the approaches that you are taking down and bring it and attach them. They're same type of handrail, if you want to have the same look. The surface, walking surface, is not safe. There are a lot of cracks and small openings on the sidewalks that they need to be all repaired. Okay? So that will meet the ADA requirements. There are curb elements that on the curb, there are metal pieces that are not safe right now. They have deteriorated, there are sharp edges, so all of those need to be replaced. The joints are leaking on the bridge, and the water is going through it, and they're collecting, so we need to clean up the joint, fix the joints on the bridge, both for pedestrians to be able to walk over it and make sure it's ADA-safe. Lighting is minimal. We need to improve the lighting for pedestrian use, and we have different way of doing it. You can have high-mass lights or low-use lights on handrail, or even something on the pavement. The drainage needs to be improved, so we don't have puddles on the bridge when people walk or bike on them. And finally, the asphalt is not needed anymore, and they're cracked, and there are patches. We may be removing the asphalt and putting some type of a surface that's more appealing to the person that's walking, and it's cleaner and easier to maneuver with the cane. And there is a small deterioration at the joint where the water went through, and the beam end has been deteriorated slowly, so we need to repair that piece underneath the sidewalk, as you can see. So this will bring the bridge up to the condition that is safe and within the standards of ADA. So now, we have to think about approaches. How do we get from the park or the bike paths up to the bridge? This is a railroad bridge, so it is fairly high bridge. It's not similar to a highway bridge. This is about 25 feet to 30 feet high. So there are two approaches. You can have a very basic connection, which is you use a prefabricated trusses, which are generally straight, and you connect point A to point B with making sure you have ADA 5% grade. So those will look like the photo you can see. These are prefabricated. And generally, these are the least expensive option. Second option is to have a little bit more elaborate connection, a little bit meandering through the tree canopy, or having the loops that comes down quicker. Of course, then you have to look at and see how fast the bicyclists are coming down when you go with the loop ramps. So this is a second option. It can be both steel or concrete, and it is more attractive and somewhat a little bit more expensive. We'll be looking at elevators. Generally, when we use elevators in this kind of setting, we like to have them see-through, so it's glass or plexiglass, like Sacramento Airport elevators, and you can have stairs that go next to them, so there is a little bit visibility on both of them if you're interested in having an elevator. On the West Sacramento side, the elevators would have to be quite a bit away from the bridge because of the levy, because it'd need elevators. So there is a little bit visibility on both of them if you're interested in having an elevator. On the west Sacramento side, the elevators would have to be quite a bit away from the bridge because of the levee. Because it need elevator pit. So it's not as practical as the Sacramento side. Coming to stairs, we can have stairs with the runners. Runners are little guiding piece on the left side. You can see, you can take your bike and put it on those runners and walk up your bike up the stairs. You can have a very basic stairs, metal stairs with the cable railings. You can have plexiglass with the stained steel handrails, really nice ones. So all of that is available to the both cities. In addition, you can have different connections coming down. If you're inside the park, you can have a slides for the kids that they can come down from the bridge using a slide. That has been used in the past. So we looked at layout of this connections, the north being on the top of the photograph. So this is the first layout. On the west Sacramento, we are showing you a straight ramps, more or less the least expensive option. So there is a one run and then you turn 90 degrees and you do another turn and then you come down to the landing. There is a stairs inside of those. It will access down. And this is the prefabricated steel option or it can be a concrete option. On Sacramento side, we are showing loops on both side and stairs and elevators near the museum. You should recognize that you really don't need two ramps on each side. It is like a pick and choose. You can pick one ramp on one side and not build the other ramp. You can come back and build it later. You can only put stairs and try to see if you can put elevator and have ADA access. So this is kind of a menu approach. This is, the surface of the existing bridge is just scored and cleaned up with some pattern. And the gates have been changed. And you cleaned it up to the point that has very basic look to it. So we haven't done very much to it. The other option is having a meandering path in Sacramento side. So it'd be more of a maybe loop connections or maybe having a more of a softer long runs with the turns rather than have a 90-degree turns, a little bit of a more of a sophisticated structure rather than a prefabricated. Similarly, on Sacramento side, we changed some of the stair locations and landings. Again, these are all mix and match. You can pick anything you want. On the both end of the bridge, there is a red dot. That is like a place finding signature, like a tree. Imagine you're standing on one side of the bridge so you can see the other side, your destination by having that monument there. And again, the purpose of it is for guiding the bicyclists and people across the bridge. You can have a variety of amenities added to the bridge. But we currently, we're looking at the least expensive options to give you a feel for the cost. This is just a quick rendering of on the approaches where the weight of the bridge is not the governing factor. You may be able to do some landscaping on your side of the property. And you can separate the pedestrian from bicyclists. So this is a four, three cross sections. One showing that you can separate pedestrian and bicyclists by some kind of a landscaping. You can fill in the gap between the two existing sidewalk walks by using a lightweight material. So that you have one level surface. Or you can have some kind of a board system that you put on top, look like a board, boardwalk. So the idea is to create a pleasant environment. But at the same time, try to guide them through the movable section and don't let them congregate there. After all, this bridge will need to open. So you will try to guide them and create a place outside of the movable section for people to congregate. What are the costs? Basic cost is the following. Generally, a ramp costs about two and a half million. If it is fancy and curvilinear, closer to three million. And if you look at some, the cost of upgrading the bridge, so it's ADA, it's about three and a half million. You can have some additional improvements, lights, wifi, things like that, stairs. All of that's another three, four, 500,000. The total cost of minimum facility mean having one ramp on one side in Sacramento side, one ramp on the other side, one stairs on each side and clean up the bridge with lights and all that. It's about $11 million construction cost, okay? So that's the number you start with. Anything you add to it, if you add two more ramps, you add five million to it. And all the amenities adds to it. So that is the basic starting point for this project. This is a rendering of the place making. On the Sacramento side, we just took it and said, what can you do with that area? Definitely, you can add a canopy and places for people to sit and enjoy the river. And then some safety railing to be away from the railroad. And this is just a vision, just one thing that you can do. There's quite a few other things you can do to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ali. That concludes Ali's presentation. Thank you. That's a really in-depth overview of everything that's going to be included in the feasibility study, which brings me to my next comment. There will be a public meeting and some more community outreach that will outline the status of the upper deck conversion. What are some of the opportunities and what are some of the challenges associated with that? So that's one of the requirements that we have left to satisfy in the grant is that community outreach. And that would be joint for both jurisdictions. And then following that outreach, we would have Ali finish the feasibility study. Include that public outreach in the feasibility study. And then bring that back both to the city council here and the city council for the city of Sacramento, sometime in the first quarter of 2019 in order to complete the project in the timeframe that's outlined in the grant. In the meantime, depending upon the comments we've received here this evening, one of the sort of implementation actions that we're looking to take following the comments received here is to move into a discussion with Union Pacific about the diagnostic. We need to do a diagnostic to look and see, are we meeting the requirements? Do we understand what the requirements are to connect and to convert it to the upper deck? And that essentially requires us entering into a small contract agreement with Union Pacific to do like what they call preliminary engineering review. It's just a small deposit for which their engineers overlook our work. So that would be the next sort of permitting phase, the next feasibility phase for the project. So that concludes the presentation and this workshop. And if you have any questions, like I said, we're all here to answer them for you. Thank you.
Great. And you seem healthier or just?
Yeah, I went outside and got a good drink of water. And Chris gave me a mint.
Oh, great.
So it's amazing.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. A couple of questions. On the costs, I didn't see in there a cost of just general cosmetic cleanup. Obviously, the bridges are in disrepair, both the upper deck and the lower deck. As part of this, would that include painting or sandblasting or cleaning up, you know, the rest of it? That's one question. The second is, operation and maintenance costs for the different alternatives would be a good idea to have. Because if we do have some type of live deck, obviously, the costs are going to be different. If it's not, materials could be different in terms of cost. But in terms of just the cosmetically, because we're going to have a really new, modern sleek bridge to the north of that, probably we don't want to have something that's kind of, still looks kind of dilapidated even with the deck on the south side. So how does that cleaning up the entire structure fit in?
So I think both those, there it goes. I think both those questions that you're referring to, both the cosmetic cleanup, sort of like how would we address making the bridge begin to look iconic beyond what it does just from its history? And then the operation and maintenance, I think that comes in the next phase of work typically. And the staff report does include a desire to pursue some additional funding next year in the amount of $1.5 million for design and permit. So I think in that phase, we would be addressing the cosmetic, the design components, looking at, but making recommendations related to like furnishing, lighting, painting aesthetics, and then also focusing again on the operations and maintenance. This is really just the focus of this study is, can it be done? What are the base considerations that are associated with it? And I think the next phase really gets into sort of, excuse the expression, nitty gritty that really is relevant and to those two questions.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Sandin.
Thanks. It seems to me, but I want to make sure I'm reading this correctly, that the time pressure for this is related to that 1981 agreement that if the highway isn't used, that it reverts back to the railroad. Has there been any thought or discussion, I'm sure there has, about having a discussion about modifying that or having an addendum to that? Because it seems like the time pressure, we might have more options or possibilities.
I haven't actually been a party to those negotiations. Chris, have you been a party to those negotiations with Union Pacific?
Then I'm going to opine here. My other experience with Union Pacific is that they would not be interested in entering into any other agreement without extracting something significant, perhaps in relationship to like maintenance or other kinds of incentives, I think is how they would refer to it. But when we did a diagnostic meeting with them related to another project, they came back with, so we would like this $13 million underpass and we would like this and we would like that. And we were talking about a modification to an existing at-grade crossing. So they have big wishes when it comes to wanting to open up transactions or deal terms. I don't have personal experience with this project, but I can tell you in my other, that they tend to have big asks when you're coming to them for something that seems reasonable. That's no criticism of Union Pacific, that's just sort of seems to be how they operate. So I can certainly find out and have communication come through the city manager or the city attorney if we've had any actual formal reach out. But my guess is there'll be big asks if we try to open up that agreement.
So with that constraint in place, if nothing can happen there, I feel that if we can't figure, I mean, we need to figure this out. Because I mean, the diagrams of accessibility and then the access to the station, the train station on the other, right on the other side of the I Street Bridge is really critical. So I don't know that I have a particular position about the kind of ramp or anything at this point. But I think we've got to figure out how to come up with something, some way to keep it pet and bike crossing.
I'm a member of the Desma.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Katie. A, this is always, I don't know, this is the first time we've seen this on, maybe the second time we've seen this on council, right?
Oh, yeah.
It's certainly more further along. And every time we see it, it, you know, kind of gets an excitement to it that we can actually try to do this. I understand the point of the feasibility is to say, okay, can you really do it? And the next step is that we're getting to nitty gritty and can you really do it? So, but it is exciting to contemplate the fact that we can turn this asset into something, continue to use it for pedestrian and bicycle and a place making, place that complements our riverfront that on both sides are starting to turn towards the right environment. I mean, you think about the fact that on our side of the river alone, with the bridge district being built out and with the barn being right now the south anchor of that, to the north to the Washington neighborhood, all the reemergence, its experience in today. And with the prospect of, you know, possibly getting the Indian Heritage Museum to the north of that on the east side of the river, then you're talking about the Powerhouse Science Museum, Old Sacramento and Railroad Museum are still there. All those things are just kind of, this would fit into that as well as councilmember Johansson brought up. We have a new bridge being built just up the river, a few hundred yards. So again, this is just really kind of an exciting thing to contemplate. But there are some harsh realities and we need to kind of dig in some more. I had the same questions, councilmember Johansson, around about ongoing O and M operations and maintenance. Because you had said at the beginning that we are responsible for it today. I don't know to what level and where that funding comes from for any ongoing operations and maintenance today. And any improvements as a capital cost would come up to get it. And some of those costs, you know, obviously replacing handrails and asphalt. And if maybe clean up of the bridge itself and painting would bring up a level of need for operations and maintenance that kind of, what are we spending today? Where's it coming from versus where is it going to be in four years or whenever we complete it? So it's just a question that I want to understand and making sure we consider that. That I don't think we've, again, I would venture to guess that ongoing maintenance of it aesthetically hasn't been great, right? And we're probably just doing the minimum around, you know, around that and we're focusing on the structural pieces of it. So again, that's something I kind of, we think we need to consider on the side. And again, because I looked at the fact that you had improvements to the roadway and possible contemplation of planting and landscaping, which would be all great, but then bring a level of operations and maintenance. So it's almost a tiering is the more we go up, the more that brings. It also, is a feasibility study at all contemplating funding for this project at all?
No, it's not. And I specifically asked Katie because I knew one of you were going to be asking me that question. So what I understand is where we are in the funding discussion is that this has to be a partnership in order for it to work. And so the dialogue with the city of Sacramento needs to continue to evolve to include funding. Right now, the dialogue has really been focused on the desirability of this reuse of this structure and their willingness to participate in figuring out what their place making expectations are, how they want to classify this use. Is it an active transportation use for them? Is it an economic development use? So they've really been kind of working on that bare bone bedrock kind of language about how do they want to communicate this particular use or this particular investment to their residents? And so we're still kind of waiting for them to get that sorted out. And then we can discuss funding with them. That's what Katie had sort of articulated is the challenge.
Sure, sure. And it will be a challenge whether, you know, this period is just finding any type of dollars for capital improvements of this type. I'm sure would be a challenge. But I would also expect in that exercise to consider, you had photos of the High Line in New York City. And knowing, having done, looked at this a year or two ago when this was all contemplated again, there was a private sector nonprofit associated with that as well as the ongoing maintenance of it. And I only suggest that as financing strategies are being contemplated, that that has to be brought into the mix. Because these types of projects elsewhere just are getting harder and harder to do by a public use entity only or let alone two entities. There'll be a certain amount of it, they'll probably be able to contribute for the capital cost, but I think more so for the O and M. So I think you actually have a friends of the High Line or I think it's what they're called in New York. But granted, they have a much, probably much more robust base of fundraising than us in Sacramento would. But I think there were folks, given all the recent activity along the riverfront and the aspirations on the riverfront, that is the improvements at Crocker Art Gallery and the move for more art on the riverfronts. And the museum pushes for more museums on both sides of the waterfront. There is much more, I think, philanthropic opportunity to get behind those sorts of things, to connect those areas. I think it just has to be part of the talk, of the conversation. Because I think in the end, they're going to want it to kind of fit in their mode. Obviously, it is an active transit pedestrian mode of operation. And, but we just have to have that as part of our language and how does that fit in? So anyways, whether that's part of the feasibility or not, we need to start having as well, not just Sacramento, how are they thinking about it? I think we have to be thinking about it. And finally, I would agree with councilmember Sandin that we do have this clock that's ticking. So timing wise, we're trying to get to a 2019 sort of timeline to kind of get past the options. But is the critical path here just getting Union Pacific kind of on board with and get to the agreement with kind of what we have contemplated and see if the engineering and what their ask will be as part of that to kind of get to that? Because that's going to obviously add to the cost as well.
I think the critical path is, one component is Union Pacific, bringing Union Pacific on board and getting them comfortable with it. I think the other path is really is helping the city of Sacramento with their narrative. And so part of that rendering that you saw was helping them with their narrative. So they can begin to sort of create those investors, whether it's public or private sector investors, just like we would in this, in this bridge. I think the other critical path of theirs too, I think the last critical path is flood. Because we will be touching down into the levees, we do need to start accelerating this project so we can begin consultation with the flood regulatory agencies because it will be in that same space. So I'd say really, it's those three. It's our partnerships with our, you know, further develop our partnerships with Union Pacific and with the city of Sacramento. And then beginning to engage flood in what we think the appropriate approach is. Because depending upon what approach we select or whether we include an elevator or not include an elevator, include an elevator, that affects the degree of permitting and complications associated with those agencies. So I really think that touches on the non-feasibility action items that I had mentioned. We have sort of things that need to be done to wrap the feasibility study. And then in parallel, there are these other things that have to occur, Union Pacific continuing our conversation with Sacramento, and then initiating the conversations with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and Army Corps of Engineers. I think those are things that have to happen in the next six months if we're going to continue on this time period for 2022.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to repeat everything that Councilmember Ledesma said, but as we're having this discussion, my first thought was this experience that I had with some of my colleagues years ago at the High Line, probably one of the richest experiences of my life to see how far that area had come and been repurposed from, you know, an old, you know, blight-filled abandoned railroad to now one of the most incredible sights, you know, sights to see over in Manhattan. And so of course, my first thoughts were, you know, well, how do they keep, I mean, that's a much larger structure than what we're talking about here. And yet, yeah, I did become aware of the Friends of the High Line. And, you know, we have our Friends of the Main Drain here in West Sacramento, so we know that it's possible, right? They're doing fantastic things over at the Main Drain. However, I do, I want to reiterate that, that, you know, that's a good point to really raise that we can't do this alone. Even two great cities, the capital city and, you know, us, we need these public-private partnerships in order to, you know, consider the maintenance. And this is a fantastic selling point, I think, because it's a wonderful opportunity for us to really start to enjoy a place that we haven't had for years, the greater opportunity of enjoying with the riverfront and all the development and all the opportunities for our growing families and connectivity and just the opportunities for our kids to be healthier and for us to move into that direction. So I mean, I know we don't have New York money, but the selling point for our families and kids is huge. And so I just wanted to comment additionally on Councilmember Ledesma, Mayor Pro Tem's comments, because I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Yeah, this project began really in that vein, was inspired by the High Line, and we were approached by folks in the, you know, in the business community and folks who had worked on the Tower Bridge lighting and other kind of civic projects, interested in making this the next central, you know, the project that the philanthropic and corporate and civic and arts community would rally around. And the High Line was not done with sort of government doing the whole thing and then going at the end and saying, hey, private sector, we need some help to fund it. It was definitely not that. And so I want to caution us not to get, not to, not to treat this like a government project and at the end go look for funding. Because it's too much, it's too much money, and we'll end up with a, we'll end up with a really nice striped bike lane and sidewalk. And we don't need to be at that place. But so, but for it to do that, for it to be the sort of thing that, you know, the folks who can put the resources together and raise the money and inspire the region, it has to be an inspiring project. They have to, they have to, to borrow Councilmember Roscoe's, you know, favorite line, you know, they have to, they have to be, they will own, they will support that which they create, right? So they need to have the ability to shape and be inspired and to create a project, not simply fill in the blanks when we're done with the project. And so we were very fortunate that our staff, you know, at the beginning of this process, when we first started talking about this project, said that, you know, went after this Caltrans money, kind of, you know, without, you know, we didn't go through a big process, we weren't even looking really. But staff said, hey, we think we can compete for this money, let's go get it. And they did. And that's awesome, and it's allowed us to get to this point. But I just, I would suggest that we be very careful about treating it like a yet another public works project. It is. It's fundamentally a public works project under the hood, but it will only capture the investment of non-public partners if it captures their imagination and their inspiration. And so even questions like, you know, what, that we're sort of already, I can hear ourselves already moving into, excuse the pun, the lane of, the UP lane of, nobody can ever stop on the bridge for more than five seconds, and they have to keep moving and whatever. So we can't put anything on it unless it's one blade of grass. I don't want to get to the point where we're already accepting and designing that into the outcome, when it may be that, you know, the, you know, Jeff Dorsa, who was a local resident, who was really inspired to work on this, you know, the Kings would fund a competition to, you know, a design competition where one of the key things was, what can you produce that weighs no more than five pounds, right? And maybe it's something spectacular that weighs less than five pounds that we did not envision or that does not exist in a bridge in Louisville or San Antonio or some other place already. And so if we're, if we want, and I definitely do want us to engage that, exactly the potential funders and donors and creators and magicians that Mr., Councilmember Ledesma and all of our colleagues have been highlighting, then we have to, right, this is the moment for us to start turning over some of the keys to the kingdom of thinking, and both to the potential donors, but also to the public in a more general way, and get crazy ideas. This is the moment for the crazy ideas as well as for the funders. So I would definitely focus in that space, especially on questions about weight and congregation. If we create a bridge like this, even if it doesn't have anything on it, and people don't congregate on it for selfies and everything else, I can't, I can't imagine that that would happen in today's world or that we would consider a success if it did.
Yeah.
If people only used it like the old rail bridge that goes onto our street in Sacramento, that's just a bike lane, basically. That's all it is. People don't congregate on that, but that's what, you know, how tragic is that? And that one doesn't go over the river. So that, I mean, this is the toughest engineering question, both in reality and especially from UP's perspective. But I think we should not reach premature closure about it and keep looking for imaginative solutions that will deal with some of the weight issues and really probe them in a very direct way so we can understand, okay, what are they really? And at what points and that sort of thing, and dealing with the fact that the bridge does have to swing open as well. So I don't know exactly the process, and it may be a conversation that we have with Mayor Steinberg about convening for real. The advisory committee to this process was also intended to become the initial DNA for a more Friends of the High Line style organization to emerge. And it sounds like this is the moment to do that. Because even if we didn't have this continuous use issue around 2022, I think we're still under a very tight timeframe simply because of public expectations and just basic mobility that, you know, in 2022, when the new bridge opens and suddenly people are excited about the new bridge and everyone's at the grand opening, we've got the ribbon, people are writing on it, there's a party on it, and then people realize they can no longer, they can no longer get to this wide area in between the Tower Bridge and the new bridge, that it will feel like a loss in the community, that people, that we've, that something's been given up. And whether we're completely ready to open up the top, the upper deck or not, I don't know, but we have to be pretty darn close. And people have to see, okay, I could wait a month or whatever, but I, you know, devil make here is relying on people who live in downtown to be able to walk across this, you know, the bridge to get, you know, get their ice cream. And where's this business going to come from if nobody's living at the rail yards at that point? You know, that, just the sense of expectation about movement and connectivity depends on there being a connection there, that the new bridge will not, will only partially satisfy. So I feel like even if we could get UP to agree, and you're right, we would have to, you know, whatever we would have to give up, it's probably better to give up on the substance of the project than on the timeframe. But I worry that if we, if we got them to agree, we'd still need to do it just because of the needs of our own, of our own residents and small businesses and commuters inside the community as well. So it's worth talking about. And I should say, we have been having discussions with Union Pacific about this and in conjunction with rail relocation and the Yola Wide Project as well. And Union Pacific, to their credit, has been, you know, has been very open and conceptually supportive to the concept in ways that had not been true, you know, a few years back. So that does not contradict anything that you said about what happens when we get to the actual point of negotiations. But, you know, five or six years ago when we first started having this conversation, the answer was, of course, we would never, we would never allow any of that if we could stop it. And today, the answer is, yeah, we can, you know, we think, we can think we could probably find a way to get there with the right conditions. So that's a completely different Omaha, Nebraska stance around these issues from Union Pacific. And so I think it's encouraging that we may have some possibilities in that space. The last, okay, two other pieces. One is that this, in addition, it's not only recreational, it's practical. And so I worry about some of the potential ramps and stuff that are like hugely long, and they meander all over the place and whatever. That sounds fun if it's like something you're going to visit as a tourist, but if you're trying to just get to work, or you got to pick up the kids up from daycare or whatever on your jump bike or whatever, that is like not attractive. I mean, this is, this is a, this has to be a functional transportation element as well. And so that's not saying it should be the shortest ramps possible, but I would definitely pay attention to the practical usability on a daily basis for users of this facility. And in addition, to think about more than just bikes and walking, that strollers, scooters, hoverboards, right, all the various modes of personal mobility that are already becoming ubiquitous in other places and to some extent here, certainly by 2022, will be ubiquitous everywhere. And so I like the little thing on the side for the bikes to go up the stairwells, but I'm not sure that's likely to be useful for many other forms of mobility. So it's not that it can be universal in design, but let's, let's start thinking about bike and ped as just two proxy words for a much broader range of personal mobility options that people are already starting to use and that this bridge by 2022 is going to need to support. Then the last piece, and I think it's related a bit to this ramp, you know, how long the ramps are, is the land consumption. You know, some of the, some of the renderings that you had looked like a whole lot of land, riverfront land was being consumed on both sides, especially on our side, potentially at least for, you know, some of the wraparound ramps and what have you. And there's a significant cost to that. And obviously, you know, it's, so when we evaluate that and we say, okay, we could either have Clark Pacific do some cast concrete circular ramps, you know, that take up a small footprint, but they cost more, but they cost an extra $300,000, but that's probably worth it if it's not going to take four acres of land to do that. So let's be, you know, let's be, you know, pound wise and as we go forward in that regard as well, because that's going to be an important dimension of the financing, both for us in terms of using the land, but also the High Line, I mean, the High Line has been an enormous development boon in Manhattan, and a lot of these projects done properly are as well. And so one of the finance considerations is, is to the, what is the maximum extent to which we can, we can bake into the new land that's created because of the ramps coming down and the other adjacent land? How can we bake into those land economics, the value that gets created by this bridge and by this bridge in its various potential iterations? This bridge is just a, as a, as a nice paved path. This bridge is a world-renowned art facility and everything in between, and what the impacts in terms of potential development economics that might support its construction and maintenance might be.
Okay. Well, we will, we have self-community outreach that we need to do, so we will definitely go back to the drawing board and try to come up with some innovative ideas for the community outreach to address the concerns that we heard about, the private sector, as well as trying to get innovators, makers, creators, thinking about how we might be incorporating this. And then certainly, as we're moving forward, we'll incorporate all these other concerns about the practicality of the ramps and the use of land and the economic premium that comes associated with the facility.
Representative Ledesma.
It's on the outreach, and you cued me up perfectly for that. And in that vein is, you know, having it here on a Tuesday from five to seven, you know, and it's really difficult, you won't, you won't get the audience maybe, it's one venue, but think about that as you're going out for the public outreach. I saw folks when the Fifth and C Garage opened up for the kind of art, public art feedback, the pop-up event they had. It was a really terrific venue. You got a mix of folks that came out from the neighborhood, they came in, they came from all over, folks from Sacramento, folks that were wanting to move here. It was, it captured exactly, you know, folks that wanted, that got public art and figured out, you know, this would be really kind of in addition to the neighborhoods in the Washington neighborhood and Barrow, but it attracted that. The thing that to keep in mind, I mean, one of my favorite parts of the month is going to see Ray and get my haircut in the Washington neighborhood. And he just looks out his window and he sees the brownfield that's across the street, but through that, he sees the biarduck going up. And he's asked about that every, almost every time, like, that's going to come down. And the imagination runs rich when you, when you see that, like, what, what could that be? And that's the outreach we need to get when you're feeling it, when you're kind of around it and look behind you, what would that be? What could it be? And I'd encourage you to go out into the neighborhoods and go out into those areas and get that feedback, because I think that's when people are there, they start to see it and they'll start to envision it, and you get the aspirational part that we're looking for.
Yeah, I think the extent to which, for both that and for the philanthropic side, reducing some of the constraints to their most fundamental, you know, even if, even if they have to be more complicated, it's, it isn't that you can't have art on there. It's not that you can't have park elements, it's that you can't have this much weight on this portion of the span, you can't have this, you can't have anything on this portion of the span that has to open. I mean, so reduce it to those, rather than drawing conclusions about what that, what that does allow, instead, you know, be clear about what the, what the underlying engineering concern is and then allow residents and others to imagine and allow potential, you know, funders, investors and artists to also to be able to imagine from the front end. We can always come back and clean it up later, but I think we need, it would be great to inspire some innovative solutions to this whole, to the whole set of constraints that exist around the, around the bridge so we don't end. So if we can avoid, I mean, if all we can get is a really good bike, bike lane and sidewalk, I'm all for it, but this, why don't we get to do this once too? So if we can, if we can leverage this into something even more special for our community and for the waterfront, for the region, it would be terrific.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, then that brings us to item 11, which is consideration of first reading of ordinance 18-1, amending chapter 13.08, title 13, Article 4 of the Municipal Code relating to maintenance of building sewers and lateral sewers. Mr. Roberts.
Sorry. So good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is William Roberts. I am the Public Works Operations Manager, and I'll be presenting the proposed amendment to Title 13, Chapter 13.08, Article 4 of the Municipal Code relating to maintenance of building sewers and lateral sewers. Not as exciting as a bridge concept, but we'll get there. Okay, with that. Okay, let's start off with the amendment process and goals are as follows. We will seek environmental utilities feedback, which was completed August 13th of 2018. Number two, conduct introduction of first reading to council seeking guidance and feedback, which is happening right now. And number three, conduct second reading and adoption to council, which is tentatively scheduled for September 19th of 2018, and resolve conflict and ambiguity between Section 13.08.140, Maintenance, and 13.08.040, definitions of the Municipal Code. Hopefully the folks at home can see this. Session 13.08.140 of the code under Maintenance indicates that maintenance of the side sewer, which includes a lateral sewer, is the responsibility of the property owner. So if you can see in the bottom of your slide where it notes side sewer, you'll see the building where it extends down, extends from the building all the way to the main sewer. That is considered the side sewer. However, Section 13.08.040, under definition, states that city is responsible for maintenance of lateral sewer. Thus, there's a conflict between these two sections of the code. So if you note on the upper top left where it notes lateral sewer extends from the main sewer to the property line, that is a lateral sewer. So why the changes, you ask? It's due to the ongoing confusion and misinterpretation of the code from customers. To make this clear, two new definitions are introduced to the code, which is lower lateral and upper lateral. Upper laterals, upper lateral sewers shall be maintained by the owner of the property served thereby. So if you note on the bottom right where it notes upper lateral maintained by the property owner, you'll see a line that extends from the building to the, to the city cleanout, which is maintained by the property owner. Lower laterals connecting to single-family units shall be maintained by the city. As you see the lower lateral, bottom left of your screen, maintained by the city, it notes from the main sewer extends to the cleanout, which is maintained by the city. However, where no cleanout has been installed or has been installed incorrectly, the entire side sewer shall be maintained by the owner of the property served thereby. Keep in mind, this change will not alter the current practice or the maintenance responsibilities. When city crews respond to a sewer overflow at a single-family dwelling, the public works crews will assess the situation. If a cleanout is not previously installed, If a cleanout is not previously installed, the operations crew will install one at no cost to the customer and continue to clean the lower lateral between the city main and the cleanout. If the blockage is between the cleanout and the building, it is a responsibility of the property owner. This practice will not change due to the request of code change. It is estimated there are over 1,200 single-family residential dwellings without cleanouts. Installing cleanouts for these buildings will cost public works operations roughly $727,000 over a five-year span. Public Works currently cannot absorb this cost in the budget to proactively install cleanouts at all these locations. Staff will be seeking opportunities to, in the upcoming budget, to generate a cleanout Public Works is recommending that council waive the first reading and read by title and number only, and direct staff to return to council for the second reading and adoption on September 19th of 2018. This concludes my presentation. I'll be very happy to answer any questions from the council, Mr. Mayor, and staff.
Questions?
So the cleanouts you're talking about, though, are the city cleanouts, not the, not the cleanouts that's
That's correct.
closest to the house.
That's correct. It's city cleanouts, which is usually one or two feet behind the walk.
When I, when I read the staff report and what you just said, this is clear, this is mainly just a clarification that's mainly what
That's correct. The existing code, it exists, but there was a lot of gray areas with the customers saying, okay, what do we maintain? Is it the whole lateral sewer or the side sewer? So if the customers do not have a cleanout, that was the main reason there, where we have to maintain the whole, the whole cleanout or the whole lateral. So I wish we can be proactively installing cleanouts, but again, the budget, operations budget. So going forward, if we receive an SSO, sanitary sewer overflow, we'll respond and we'll clean, we'll install a cleanout at no charge to the customer. And from that point, we establish, we explain to the customer that your service is from the cleanout to the building, your house, and then from the cleanout to the main is the City of West Sacramento responsibility.
And so that wouldn't also change? That, it's just the proactivity of taking folks that have, maybe haven't had an issue or the thousand, there hasn't been an issue, but going and installing them?
That's correct.
Okay. But it wouldn't change any, like, right now, tomorrow?
No.
Or after this, if this were going forward, it wouldn't change anything?
Nothing, not at all.
Okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Yeah, so to be, so to be clear, is that when you install them, it's still, is it the property owner's responsibility for the cleanout going forward?
No, it'd be the City of West Sacramento.
City, that's right.
That's correct, yeah. So we'll install one at our cost and then we'll actually educate the customer and tell him or her, basically, this is your side, and then from the point of service, which I call it, was a cleanout, towards the main is a property of the City of West Sacramento.
Right. I, I'm assuming that the confusion from residents is, I've heard this before, actually, from many residents who asked me, like, as I would, I would know this, if it works, like, what do we have responsible? It's always been a source of confusion. I don't get it a lot, but I do hear it occasionally, like, what are we responsible for? Is it from the street connection to the drain or is it to the house? What is it? So I would encourage, once we go through, and thanks, Councilmember Sandin, for clarifying that there's no change to what it is, but it really will clarify for residents what they're responsible for or not.
That's correct.
Is even having this sort of graphic on the website so it's clear, people going forward can understand it.
Sure, we can, I can talk to staff, we can actually propose to, you know, put something on the website where it makes it more clear, not as gray for the customers, where they can really look at a depiction and say, okay, from this point going forward, here's my point of service from the cleanout to the, to the house. And/or the billing, we can put something in the, in the bill where they can actually review it.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would suggest that, that since there are two cleanouts, that you not keep referring it to the cleanout. As a homeowner, the cleanout is the cleanout that you clean out that's right at your building. I don't, I never thought of the one past the tree, that, you know, with this, all the, all the, all the roots growing into it, that I, the cleanup past that, I never even think about that one, is the one that's right next to my house. So I, if we want, if we want to be as clear as possible with, with homeowners, I think it's, it's useful to be very, to very, very distinguish very carefully between those two, so that they understand which ones we're talking about. I did, so I, I'm gonna, I support this, just as a process issue, though, I'm gonna ask that, that staff also return this to the Environment Utilities Commission. We actually got no, this has been an ongoing issue about, about commission feedback, and the city clerk and I have tried to gently, with the commission chairs and with the commission clerks, to insist that we get actual recommendations. So the commission apparently raised some concerns about some of the definitions. Those weren't reported to us here, they're, they're in the staff report, but they were not reported to us. The commissions are advisory to the council, not to the department, and so we need to be informed of what they, what they raised, but the commission also has to decide what are their concerns. So as the planning, former planning commissioners on the, on the council are, you know, their experiences with a commission that makes its specific recommendations, votes on them, and those recommendations come here, and then we evaluate those recommendations in conjunction with the recommendations of the departments. With many of the other commissions, we've struggled because we're not getting that information from the commissions. We get, this was presented to the commission and they seem to like it.
Sure.
Or this was presented to the commission and they had some questions. Well, that's not useful to us, and it's not, it's not keeping faith with what the, what the citizens who are serving on the commissions are contributing to the process. So it really is essential that the commissions vote on a recommendation and that that recommendation say what their recommendation as a commission is, not as seven individuals, but as a commission, what their recommendation is. So I, I'm gonna ask this, I know the commission has a special meeting between now and the next council meeting when this will be up for third reading. I don't imagine that, that, you know, it's going to change, but we need, I'm gonna ask if we do that. And then second, if, if Councilmember Sandin is willing, we've had a request from the chair of the planning commission pending for a while to, to create a commission procedure manual. I think it's, and the chair of the parks commission and the chair of the Transportation, Mobility, and Infrastructure Commission are also interested in that. And just separate from this item, I was gonna ask Councilmember Sandin and those three commission chairs to work with the city clerk's office to craft that. So, because this is not the fault of any clerk or any staffer at the commissions, it's just having what, a set of uniform procedures that both the commissions are following and that the, and that the staff are reporting to the council so that we can give due deference and, and benefit from the expertise and from the common sense questions of the citizens that are volunteering their time to serve on our commissions.
Sure.
Ms. Mayor, that would be appreciated, and I just want to clarify for this particular item, we have first reading tonight, we would go to the commission, get the clear recommendation, and then come back for second reading as planned. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, didn't want to restart the clock, so.
Right.
Does that make sense? Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Is there a motion?
Yeah. Okay. Am I missing anything?
Do we require, do we require a public hearing on this?
No, there's no public hearing required, but if you would just, you can just remove the recommended action.
Yeah, I'll remove the recommended action.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, thank you. Okay, council calendar, Ms. Berlin.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. A couple of items that are coming up in the next couple of weeks. September 12th through the 14th is the California League of Cities Conference down in Long Beach, and Councilmember Sandin will be our delegate there. And then on September 15th, we have the Delta Waterway cleanup, and that's in the Bridges, Bridge District in the area of the barn, and that's on the Saturday from nine to noon.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, just a couple items related to some of the themes tonight. First of all, the, on public art, the Mill Street Pier, you may notice, is under construction again. It's a grant-funded project. They're installing the, the West sculpture at the end of the pier. We don't have a, a date on the calendar quite yet, but there will be an upcoming opening for that, but you can see the, the construction activity taking place. Secondly, opportunity zones, I know it's a topic of interest for the council right now. Katie Jacobson was, was not here tonight to do the I Street deck conversion presentation because he's at a conference on opportunity zones. So I just want to note that we'll be planning to bring the workshop forward in, in one of the upcoming council meetings on our strategy related to those. And then lastly, I just wanted to point out, Chris Rankin, as of last week, just marked her 30th year with the city, so I wanted to congratulate her on that. Thank you. And that's all, thank you.
That's a lot of elections and public records that request.
I just want to point out that I started when I was 12.
Yeah, she was the first steps intern, actually. All right, congratulations to the city clerk. Thank you, one of the most outstanding city clerks in the state, probably the most outstanding, but I just don't, I haven't met them all. And real treasure for the council and for the city staff and for the public as well, just does a terrific job on behalf of the city through some difficult circumstances. So thank you so much. City attorney report. Staff direction for members of the council? And we have no future agenda requests, so Mr. Joe Anderson moves.
I'll second.
Mayor Prottemm Ledesma seconds, the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.